I'd like to remind everyone that per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream at the DHSTV Media YouTube channel. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast on DCTV's Channels 9 and 18 on the following days. Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practiceable. Ms. Genther, can we have a roll call, please?
Chris Oliver. Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Mary Wade.
Here.
John Noons.
Yeah.
Just like to let everyone know that Mr. Oliver had work commitments with the opening of schools and a cushion, and so he was unable to be here this evening. Because the meeting is closed to the public, we don't have anyone here for public comment, but comments are welcome via email. If you have comments, you should email those comments to the recording secretary Kathleen Genther at DartmouthSchools.org. That's K-A-T-H-L-E-E-N-G-E-N-T-H-N-E-R at DartmouthSchools.org. All of the emails will be entered into the public record when the minutes are approved at our next meeting. Also, all of those emails will be forwarded to every school committee member. We do see all of your emails, and we do appreciate them, and we appreciate Kate taking the time to send all of those to us. At this time, I'm going to move to the approval of the minutes. We have regular and executive session minutes for August 18th and regular and executive session minutes for August 24th. Let's take the regular session minutes together, so I'll seek a motion for approval of the regular session minutes for August 18th and August 24th.
So moved.
A second. Alright, so I have a motion by Mr. Noons and a second by Mrs. Amorall. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I assume we still have to do a roll call, yes? Since we don't have the public here?
No, we're good. We're open.
We're okay. Alright. But then, all in favor?
We're not Zoom. We're live.
Hi. Okay. Anyone opposed? So that's four, zero in favor. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes. We can take them together for August 18th and August 24th.
So moved, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion by Mr. Noons and a second by Mrs. Amorall. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so those pass unanimously as well. So we are going to take one order of new business out of order first on our agenda, because I believe we have Mr. Crisifouli live already, and we don't want to keep him waiting.
Yep.
So Dr. Gifford, do you want to do a little introduction first, and then we'll hear from him?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to introduce Andrew Crisifouli, who is our AD this year. I just want to start the conversation by saying Mr. Kylie and I, along with Principal Tebow, have had numerous conversations with Andrew about the proposition that we have on the table to vote to approve athletics at the Dartmouth Public Schools. As you might know, any schools that are voting to start their schools in remote model need to have a school committee vote to approve athletics in the district. And I know Andrew's going to have a great presentation to see what kind of guidance that we'll be adhering to and how we're going to keep our kids safe. And at the end of that, I would like a vote, because the season will be moving along, and they are working very hard on creating pods and competitions. So with that, Mr. Crisifouli.
You can go ahead and get started now, Andrew. I don't know if you can hear us. Can you let him know, Jonathan, that he can get started?
Good morning.
Yep. He might get it.
Good evening, folks. I appreciate, you know, Dr. Gifford allowing me to present in this format, and the family issue going on, it was very difficult for me to get back up to Dartmouth tonight, and Mr. Parati and Mr. Galishaw for working the optics for allowing this to happen. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. It is about our athletic program. I am sure that throughout the summer months, there was much information that was shared by the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Public Health, DESI, the EEA, and the MIAA about the status on fall sports. And one of the pieces of guidance that came out was if a school department was to begin the year remote, we would need superintendent's approval to be able to move forward with an athletic program offering to our students. So I put together a slideshow that I feel will be very informative and offer all of you a lot of information and sharing my feelings and thoughts of where we stand and where I believe we should proceed. So I'm going to share my screen. I think I already have. Okay. Alright, can everyone see?
Yes.
Okay. So, the summer dialogue and decision-making, and again, as I mentioned earlier, there was a lot of, there's a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, a lot of moving parts over the summertime, that basically aligned with all of the moving parts of the academic piece of returning to school. So the four main decision-making bodies that were involved with what sports are cleared to play, the restrictions and guidelines that we must follow, the seasons and the dates and the seasonal sport offerings, the four main bodies were DESI, the DPH, EEA, which is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and the MIAA. Now, in a traditional year, and I think we'd all agree that this is certainly not traditional, we would have a three-season model. The model would be season one, which would be fall, which would be August and November. You would have the winter season, which would be December to February, kind of branching into March, and then you would have the spring season from March and concluding in June. So the fall sport offerings traditionally are your golf, field hockey, football, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls cross-country unified basketball and volleyball. For the winter would be boys and girls basketball, boys and girls ice hockey, boys and girls indoor track, and cheerleading, or competitive cheerleading. I'm sorry, I forgot to put competitive cheerleading also in the fall. And in the spring would be your baseball, softball, boys and girls outdoor track, unified track, sailing, boys and girls lacrosse, and boys and girls tennis. Now, throughout the summer months, guidelines came out, there are certain sports that are at the higher risk category that we offer in the fall. And so there was a lot of meetings over the summertime to see exactly what we would do with those sports if we could not play them in their traditional seasons. And we certainly had all students and athletes in the forefront of our minds when creating this plan. And again, it offers a little bit of flexibility, albeit it's not the best of situations, but we have to make the best of it. So the recommendation due to the DESI, EEA, and MIA restrictions and guidelines was to move to a four-season model. Now, again, the MIAA, which was comprised of a COVID task force, approved and recommended this four-season model. Now, in this slide, there is a lot going on, and I'll do my best to explain. So in the green are your lower-risk sports deemed by the EEA. You have your moderate-risk sports, which are in yellow, which is EEA standards, and then your higher risks that are in red. So with this four-season model, what basically happened and what they did was they created an extra season. And they tried to quote-unquote wedge it in in between the winter season ending and the spring season beginning. And what that allowed was the opportunity for the three higher-risk fall sports to have a landing spot. Now, again, it is not an ideal situation, because when I share with you what the dates are, it is, there are some problems, and it can be problematic, but again, we have to make the best of a tough situation. So in this fall, the sports that would be cleared for competition would be golf, field hockey, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls cross-country, and volleyball. In the winter, and again, this is going to be visited season by season, and as you know, a lot of the restrictions and recommendations do change quite often, and it is of my hope, and I know everyone else's hope, that, again, as the year progresses, the situation with COVID-19 and people's health improves. And so those would be the fall sports in which we would have the ability to offer competitively. In the wintertime, you would have your basketball, your ice hockey, your indoor track, and your cheer. Now, again, three of those four offerings are still in the higher-risk category. So we could get to the month of November into December, and if they still are at higher risk, there'll be additional conversations that take place about the offering of those sports in those respective seasons. So the Fall II season, actually, let me rewind a moment. The fall, the traditional fall would start Friday the 16th, I believe it is, or 18th, I'm saying. And it would last until mid-November. And then winter would start at the end of November and run to April vacation, I'm sorry, February vacation. The fall would start, Fall II would start at the end of February and run until April vacation, and the spring would pick up after April vacation and run through the month of June. So the standard that we are going to attempt to reach is anywhere between an eight and a 12-game season. Now, it has already been determined in the fall that we are not going to have state tournaments. So that will be, offer some flexibility towards the end of the season, in which we will be able to fit in a few more competitions, where in traditional seasons, we would have to end the season, and then if you were not tournament-bound, your season would end, and you wouldn't get those extra games. So it does offer a little bit of flexibility. The winter, the Fall II, and the spring, as far as state tournaments go, will be determined as we get closer. One of the things that the state did not want to do, and I can understand why, is they did not want to make a decision in August that a spring state tournament is canceled. So they are going to take it as the years progress and kind of take a temperature check as to where we're at with the health and well-being of our society. So that is the four-season model that they have shared and recommended. Now, the school-based decisions that we will need to make, and again, the decisions that Dartmouth Public Schools make can be very different than some of our surrounding communities, because each and every community and public school have their own challenges. So the first one is can our school honor the safety precautions and guidelines that are set? Is the best option to move fall sports to Fall II? So one thing that I apologize and did not mention in the previous screen was, again, with Fall II, you do have the option to moving those fall sports to the Fall II season, which, again, as we progress, I'll explain to you that I believe that is very problematic. But again, that's a decision that the school would have to make. Who are we going to play? I'm sure that you've seen in the newspapers that some schools and some leagues have decided that they are not going to move forward with a fall athletic experience, and they have their reasons. And as I mentioned, every school department has their own challenges, and they have the autonomy to make those decisions. So, again, who are we going to play? Who is left to play? Who is available to play? Again, those are decisions that we'd have to make. Are we willing to compete while following the new sport rules and guidelines? Now, again, this is a big piece. Now, the sport rules and guidelines that have been set were put in place for the health, safety, and well-being of our student-athletes to be able to participate. Again, I caution everyone that, you know, some of the sports guidelines will, you know, will be a very big transition from what coaches and student-athletes are used to play, how they're used to playing. But again, that's a decision that we would have to make. And then what is our transportation situation? And again, transportation is, you know, from the very beginning, I know from the academic standpoint and the athletic standpoint, transportation is definitely a key piece. Now, the overarching focus in all of our decision-making is what is in the best interest of our students' health, safety, and well-being, physically, socially, and emotionally. So that has to be in the forefront of our minds when we're making these decisions. So the DPH guidelines, and again, this is something that I know has been shared, talked about, but I just wanted to touch upon, you know, and how it would affect the athletic realm. If student-athletes and coaches have any symptoms of COVID-19, they're not allowed to attend practices and games, and they follow up with the guidance for isolation and testing. And number two, student-athletes and coaches who are diagnosed or test positive for COVID-19 infection will follow the established protocols. And then third, student-athletes and coaches who were exposed to someone who tested positive for COVID-19 will not be able to participate in practices and games until their 14-day quarantine is complete. And this is where the communication comes in, where the athletic department will be responsible to contact the appropriate parties that were involved in those competitions, games, to inform them. So, again, with the EEA and the MIA COVID Task Force guidelines, you know, I went through them, there's a lot of common pieces. There are some differences depending on the sports, but compiled this listing of some of the common precautions. First one would be a pre-workout, pre-contest screening. Now, this would be, you know, we did this in strength and conditioning, in which the students came in, they checked in, they signed in, they answered questions based on how they felt physically. And then, again, without having any symptoms, that was their pre-screening, and they were allowed to participate. And again, we would have something very similar in place from the athletic realm. There's a multiple-layered face covering, alright, that will be required for on the field, the bus, and the bench areas. Now, and again, it is very detailed in the protocols and procedures that we're going to have to follow, but the multiple-layer face covering is something that is recommended. They did mention the gaiters, but the preference would be the multiple-layer face coverings. Social distancing as much as possible, which, again, I think that's a common theme amongst all of us right now in education. Pod practices, and let me just mention, this is for practices only, is encouraged that the same five to 10 kids work together in drills. So if I am in a soccer practice, I should be in a group of five or 10 of my peers and teammates and working out together in drills. That certainly doesn't mean that those pods need to stay throughout the entire practice, because I'm sure that they could be, you know, under the restrictions, there can be a little bit of scrimmaging. But again, it's very important that they work in pods as much as they possibly can, because it helps with the tracking in the case that we had to implement that. So no benches for practices. And the reason for that is personal items should be distanced. What I have found is if you do have benches, it is a place in which students would congregate, and again, remembering they're 15- to 18-year-old students, and they are meant to be together and socialize. So if, you know, the bench can be problematic if you don't, you know, tend to it. So for practices only, there'd be no benches for games and competitions, obviously, we would have them, and practicing, safe social distancing. And their personal items would have to be six feet away from the next person's items. Again, so there isn't any congregating. So the next three I highlighted in yellow, because we're going to, in just a moment, talk about a student-athlete bag, and I'll explain what that is, but in this particular student-athlete bag, the participants are going to need to provide their own water. There will not be any water filling stations, so they will have to bring their own beverage. Participants will provide their own hand sanitizer, and participants would provide their own disinfectant wipes. And this would be in a bag, and this is what the recommendation is. Now, if you get to the sanitation, the sanitizing disinfectant wipes, that would be for instances where you're wiping down some of your own personal equipment. If you did have to use the restroom facilities, you do have those wipes with you that you can use, and so on and so forth. So again, those are three things that we would ask to provide in the student-athlete bag. There would be COVID staffing at the games. Probably more, I mean, all of us would be responsible for the staffing of it, but there would be one particular person. That would be the point person, the go-to person. And at that point, we would ask, you know, our own coaches and opposing coaches to bring updated rosters and contact information for the purpose of tracing, if we were to have a situation where there was a positive COVID-19 participant, and for the tracing purposes, it's important to know who is there, and that's not only student-athletes, but that's also coaches. And that person would assist the athletic trainer with game day issues, having, you know, a certain area that we could set up a small tent that if anyone is feeling any type of symptoms of COVID-19, that is an area in which we would transport the individual. And the final one is maximum of 24 in a transportation-traveling party, and that would include the coaches and staff. And again, that number is smaller than what we're traditionally used to, but in order to socially distance them appropriately, they would have their masks, the windows open, and making sure that we're aligned with all of those guidelines. So in order to move forward, I think there's four keys. First one is communication. Second is transparency. Third is responsibility, or I should say, personal responsibility. And the final one for all parties is a buy-in. Alright? Without those four, you know, it would be difficult to move forward. Now, in some of the conversations that I've had, there is definitely a great appetite to move forward, so I think the buy-in portion of that would fall into place just nicely. Okay, now, again, establishing stakeholders' roles and responsibilities. When you get to communication and you get to transparency, there, these stakeholders are going to be the people that make this successful. And that would be your student-athletes, your families, and your coaches and athletic staff. And the athletic staff, I would put the coaches, myself, athletic trainer, game-day staff, and so on and so forth. So there's three different groupings. So what I would like to do, and I should say like to do, what we will do, is conduct sport-specific virtual meetings to address pre-workout and pre-contest screening, the importance of communication, so that if an individual is home for a day because they have some symptoms or they're not feeling well, that communication is extremely important. We have safety guidelines that everyone needs to be aware of for buy-in. Responsibilities and transparency, again, same. Sport-specific rules of play. And again, this is going to be a big one. But in order for us to safely offer sports competitively, we will need to align with all of the rules of play. Your student-athlete bag, as I mentioned, you have your hand sanitizer, you have your disinfectant wipes, you have multiple masks. So what my recommendation is going to be is students have multiple masks in their bag. I haven't decided on a concrete number yet, but those masks have to be with them, they have to be cleaned and washed on a normal basis. You have your sanitizing of equipment. Student-athletes and families would be responsible to sanitize their own personal belongings. That is a key element to keeping people safe. You have your transportation rules. You have your user fee. Now, the user fee we charge is $50 per season. That, when final rosters are created, we will reach out for the payment of the user fee. Now, that user fee will, is going to service whether we play for four weeks or eight weeks. It's a $50 fee. Okay? And the final one is a sports physical. Now, over the summertime, we were waiting patiently to see if the Department of Public Health was going to change some of their guidelines with the longevity of an active physical, but they stayed pat at 13 months. So now, we began the process of trying to encourage people within the last week to turn in those sports physicals that they may have, and if they don't have a current one, you know, encourage them to go to the doctor. And we also gave a few different, a few different options of whether they walk-ins or some of the local medical associations, so. But that would be the sports physicals. For the coaches and athletic staff, again, me, individual sport meetings. So instead of having a larger meeting with all sports represented, these would be individualized meetings with individualized sport coaches, going over the rules, guidelines, and expectations, because the coaches will have a huge role in the implementation of this plan. Distinguishing safety roles and responsibilities, so everyone knows what is expected of them. Going over your sport rule modifications, not only for them to know, but also for them to adjust their practices and the way they teach certain things. So again, I'll use an example for soccer. There are no throw-ins. Again, that changes a little bit with the strategy, and that's one of many examples in the sport of soccer that will change. They'll be responsible for the sanitation, sanitizing the equipment. And the last piece is it will be required of all coaches to take the NFHS, which is the National High School Federation of Sports, COVID-19 online course. Okay? Now, additional communication outside of the individualized sport meetings with student-athletes, parents, and a separate one with coaches. We will put out and publish our next newsletter, which is Between the Lines, which, again, we started at the very end of July. And I'll put together a video that will highlight all of the topics that were discussed. Just, I feel as though, again, attacking it from three different angles will give us a better opportunity, give us a better opportunity to be able to really communicate and be transparent about what our expectations are and what the roles and responsibilities of individuals is. Now, additional specific safety precautions. Now, the first one is no locker rooms. Now, while being remote, you know, student-athletes must arrive with and in their gear for practice or games. This could be revisited when we shift to a hybrid model. Again, those conversations will, I mean, those conversations have taken place already, but the formal, will finalize the plan moving forward when that situation happens. And the second bullet, which, again, is, I think is extremely crucial, it certainly will not be popular, but no fans in attendance, because I believe that all of our attention, energy, and resources must be laser-focused, I stole Mr. Tebow's laser-focused idea, on participants' safety and well-being. We are going to have so much responsibility on the field for all the rules and regulations that we must implement, that all of our attention to keep our students, our coaches, and our staff safe needs to be on the playing field. Okay, so how we will adapt? We are going to, we are going to stream varsity games. Now, this conversation has been ongoing with Mr. Parati for probably about a month and a half now, as far if we were to get to a situation where streaming of games would be something that we would definitely have to do. We started those conversations probably in mid-July, mid-July. And there are some, there are some opportunities. Certainly, it's going to meet with, you know, some challenges will be met with, but, you know, whether it's Facebook Live, using YouTube, or I reached out yesterday to DCTV and to see what their availability could and would be, and to see if there was an appetite for that. So again, that is something that continues to be a work in progress. The last two would be a sign-off for the rules, guidelines, of the responsibilities that student-athletes and families have, and a sign-off for what our athletic staff responsibilities are. Alright? So again, everything would be transparent, and there would be accountability to that. So additional work to be done. I'm certainly not going to mislead, there is a lot to do. There is a lot to do if we were to get clearance. I'm proud to say that mostly, if not everything, has been planned and discussed and talked about for months now. So I feel very confident that we would be able to hit the ground running right away. Some of these things have already been put in place, while others will need to get started tomorrow and Thursday, especially when it gets down to the league expectations, and I'll mention that in a moment. But your registrations in your sports physicals, family ID has, has been open for a while now at the, at the beginning of August. And there have been registrations for a variety of different sport offerings. Now, our numbers are a little bit lower than what they traditionally are at this point. But again, with, with, without knowing what we would be able to move forward with, I would equate lower numbers to that fact. Sports physicals, as I mentioned, you know, after the communication was sent out earlier, we, we have been sent quite a few sports physicals over the last few days to our athletic secretary, Dolores Consalletti, and she's done a great job of then putting them into our system. There'll be the user fee collection. As I mentioned, the collections would take place once we are, once we have our rosters finalized. The third one is sport level offered, offerings. You know, again, without knowing what our numbers are, and truthfully, without knowing what other schools are going to be in play to be able to compete against and what levels they will offer, that decision has not been made yet. Next bullet would be finalizing SEC, which is your Southeast Conference, is the conference that we're in, league expectations, your game day protocols. So what I mean by that is specific gates that student athletes would enter and exit from. Again, depending on how the schedule would work, you could see both your varsity and sub-varsity games if time allows because on the backend, we worry about triple E. But to try to get your varsity and your JV games played in the stadium because it's a lot more manageable of a facility. But again, that certainly has not been decided or determined. And unfortunately, we, there's a lot of other value, variables in play that we don't have control over. So at this point, we're going to have, that's going to be a waiting game. Participating expectations, league rules and proposals. Again, whether they're roster limits, you know, there's a lot of discussion that's going to happen. We actually have a league meeting tomorrow. Once, again, I know what the results of our situation tonight here is. We have to create our game schedules. Again, one of the, one of the challenges we have with game schedules, and I'll be very upfront and honest with you, we are in a league of five, Brockton, New Bedford, Durfee, us, and Bridgewater, Rainham. Brockton is not competing this fall because they are a school district in a city that is in the red, so they cannot compete. So now we're down to four. There are three main conferences in our district, district is District Eight. I'm sure some of you may have seen the article that was written in the Standard Times about a proposal that was made for regional pods. Again, that's something that is still ongoing. But again, with a large conference in, in our Mayflower Athletic Conference in our area that has decided to move everything to Fall Two, those schools are off, off the board. South Coast Conference, which would be the next school, a league of 10. They still don't know at this point what they're doing as a league and/or individual schools. And again, if we were to, to get approval, we would at least have four of us that'd be able to move forward. And again, creating game schedules is, is difficult. And the, and the other part of that is with the Mayflower Athletic Conference, Dartmouth, Dartmouth High School is not a great matchup for, for those schools, those traditionally, you know, smaller schools that play in lower divisions. The South Coast Conference, which again, has a large and a small, which five large schools, five small schools, in 10 in all, they, they could very well decide that they want to schedule only conference games. So now, we would be left, if we were to move to a different season, this fall sports to a different season, we would be left with a struggle to find opponents because our league of the Southeast Conference would move forward with or without us. So again, that's another big reason to highly consider this proposal. And the last one is reserving transportation. Now, we, again, we, Tremblay Bus is our main transportation company. Greater New Bedford Voke uses Tremblay, New Bedford High School uses Tremblay. And again, when we're all going to be required to have only a certain amount of students, student athletes and staff on a bus, and we're going to need to request additional buses, depending on, you know, when our reservations are and what other school schedules look like, it could get very challenging for participation, transportation. So that's another factor that will need to be worked on. Okay? So again, at the very beginning, I shared with you some of the school-based decisions, and I highlighted what my answers are in red. Can we honor the safety precautions? I put with proper communication, transparency, responsibility. Buy-in, absolutely, yes. Is the best option to move fall sports to Fall Two? And I put by competing in the traditional fall season, we eliminate issues with scheduling, follow-through, and environmental concerns. Another thing is, if the decision was to move fall sports to Fall Two, now you're in a season that will begin in February, and the challenge was, would be to roll out a season with possible weather concerns, six inches of snow on the ground. And we're fortunate to have a turf field, we're fortunate to have a large activity center, but I think it would be an extreme of challenge for us to pull it off, never mind some of the smaller schools who have grass fields and smaller gyms. But the fear of offering volleyball, football, unified basketball, field hockey, boys and girls soccer, cheerleading, all in the same season, and again, in the facilities, if we were to have to start indoors, that would be a scheduling nightmare. And on top of it, depending on what our situation is with the restrictions and the guidelines, we might not be in any better of a shape in February and March than we are right now. Now, we're going to bring student athletes and teams indoors, which again, brings in a different element of challenge in a very restricted time to be able to get practices in. So again, it, it just, it makes perfect sense to move forward and offer everything that we can in the fall season that is realistic for us. And the last one, who are we going to play? You have your New Bedford, Durfee, Bridgewater, Rainham. And again, additional schools and schools, there's certainly many conversations that are happening to try to get commitments from schools. And, and again, that is ongoing. Are we willing to, to compete while following the new sport rules? We're going to adapt and to adjust in order to give our students the opportunity to safely participate. And with, with strategic planning, transportation will not be an issue. So again, going back to our first question, what is in the best interest of our students? Health, safety, well-being, physically, socially, and emotionally? Put six things. In order, if we were to offer off fall season and, and allow our student athletes to compete in the approved sports, it will promote physical, social, emotional well-being of students. It will, again, engage them in physical activity. It will prevent students from seeking other less healthy extracurricular outlets. It engages student athletes and creates academic accountability because, again, they will be remote, there will be a system in place that if they were not attending their remote classes, they would be absent and ineligible to participate that day. So that's the accountability piece. It creates a sense of normalcy. And the last one, it promotes structure, routine, and balance. And those are six key components as to why I feel that we need to move forward with this, and I am confident that we will be able to do it safely. So that is our presentation.
Fantastic presentation. Thank you very much.
Yes. The only, the only issue, and like I said, this is a phenomenal format. The only thing that I think I may struggle with is, is hearing questions if they were to be asked.
I'll do the best I can. Simple, easy question. With all of this going on, in, you know, somewhere down the line, somewhere down the line, we don't have, watch.
Jonathan, I can't, I can't hear.
That's okay. I'm going to, he's going to. What, what's, what's the status for athlete of all seasons with all of this going on?
What is the status of, I'm sorry, what season?
The athletes.
Multiple sport, yeah.
You know, like the, the three sports for 12 seasons?
The athletes would, the MI is allowing a four-season student athlete. So again, if, in a traditional season, they are allowed to compete in one sport per season, so three in all. In this format of a four-season layout, they would have the ability, if they so chose, to compete in four seasons.
Are we, are we able, sometimes we've played Rhode Island schools. Is that on the table this year or is that out?
So, Mr. News, the, the goal, the goal that, that I've had from the very beginning and, and I presented to 28 athletic directors in our immediate area, I presented it last week, was a pod idea in which we grouped schools in pods, local pods, so five or six schools within a very close distance so that we would be able to come and schedule with each other. The leagues would be removed from play for this year. And again, I think it would, it would be a great thing moving forward. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, there are a lot of schools that have their own challenges and some of their own concerns, and some have already decided to move their fall season from traditional fall to Fall Two, which I think, after presenting, I think you would know, that is something that I would not recommend because of the, the challenges and so many of the unknowns. I'm a firm believer that a bird in hand is better than two in the bush. So if we are, this, and, and weather-wise, the fall is the best of the three seasons. So if we do have the situation in which we can roll out an athletic program and offerings safely, I believe that is in our best interest to do so. But again, with the regional play, Mr. News, to answer your question, we would not be playing Rhode Island schools.
That's good. Thank you. One thing to remember when you get into Fall Two is you've got the indoor percussion and the indoor color guard that also need the gym. So it's just, it puts that much more pressure on.
Absolutely. And again, when you, when you talk about the logistics of scheduling, and I, and I certainly didn't purposely leave them out, I, I, I think anyone who has had conversations with me about that particular situation, every conversation that, that I've been involved with, I have mentioned the space for Color Garden Band that between the month, the months of mid-February till the beginning of April, I know that traditionally with competitions, that is a hot time for indoor facility use. I don't know what their situation is moving forward as far as what their competitions would look like, but that has certainly been brought up in every single conversation that I've had concerning the, the issues with moving fall to Fall Two and indoor scheduling.
And my last, my last question at the moment is, this is just approving the plan? This is not saying what students can or cannot participate, whether they're remote or hybrid?
No, no. That, that's, that, obviously, that, that is a conversation and issue that would be determined, you know, obviously, not right now. That's, that's a conversation that will, will involve other individuals, and it's totally separate from what I would be presenting and recommending right now.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Waite, you want to go next?
Sure. Hi. So I just have a, one quick question. First of all, I should step back and say, excellent presentation. I had questions that came up and you answered.
Jonathan, I can, I can hear her loud and clear.
Oh, good. So, so thank you.
Right ahead. But I appreciate that.
It was great, very thorough. You know, I agree with no fans. I think, again, to your point, let's really focus on getting the kids, you know, out in the fields and playing. You know, I agree with your timing. I think we want to try to, as you said, bird in the hand, let's get them out in the fall, take advantage of the good weather. We don't know what's in front of us, so those sports that we can, let's, let's get them going. The only question I guess I had regarding transportation is, you know, as we kind of think about busing, and I know that, you know, when we're actually physically bringing students back and forth to school, parents are opting, in some cases, drive students themselves. Is that going to be, has that been passed around as an option for parents? Again, I know we're not going to have fans, but are they able, if they choose to, to drive their children to competitions? And that's my only question.
Okay. So in a, in a traditional year, I would say no because, again, I, I, I think there is so much value and importance of not only, you know, being transported with your, your, your teammates and your peers and your coaches to and from events. And, and from my experience as a, as a student athlete, those were great times and, and a great piece of the experience. Now, in this case, again, these, nothing has been finalized, but that has been brought up and discussed as to what would constitute, or I should say, what procedures that we would have in place. I can tell you that there's also been conversations about having, you know, offering athletics and having it a five-day-a-week program this, this, this season. And again, I'm just sharing with you some conversations that have happened, that nothing has been finalized yet because, again, there are just so many moving parts. But I just want to let all of you know that this has been extremely thought out, well-thought-out. And we've exhausted our resources as far as, you know, my, my athletic director peers, our state association, the MIAA, and, and all the guidelines that we'll have to follow. So again, we're, we're kind of out, out front with this. But again, there are a lot of things that are in place, there are some things that are not, but that has definitely been a topic that has been discussed and a topic that will be considered.
Well, again, thank you very much for, you know, again, to your point, excellent, very well-thought-out, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ammaral.
Can you hear me? I don't know if you can. Are you able to hear?
Kathleen doesn't have a teacher voice like Mary, so Jonathan's going to have to.
So I, I just want to express, you know, my gratitude for this well-thought-out presentation as well. It has been clear from day one of Mr. Christofouli joining us here in Dartmouth, his level of expertise, and, and he mentioned hitting the ground running. And I have full faith based on how he hit the ground running here with his leadership and his expertise in the plan that he's presenting. My one, I, like Mary, I've been crossing out some questions that I had along the way. So you've, you've done a really good job, well-thought-out in what we might, we might ask. But one, one thing that just came to mind in terms of students registering for their particular choice of sport, might there, might, might it, might there be an option to sort of rank, rank choice? So a student, instead of revisiting the pot when you realize you don't have enough for a particular event?
Sorry, Mr. Galishaw, what was, what was the question?
Like where they choose their first and their second choice so that you don't have to kind of come to the community again to say, could you pick your second choice?
Well, unfortunately, the way that the scheduling program, I shouldn't say scheduling program, the way that the registration program runs is students have the ability to sign up for the sport in which they're interested in. Now, now, please know that there, there are, you know, there are sports that have the opportunity to move forward competitively. And there are some sports, as I mentioned, that are traditional fall sports that do not have the, the ability to move forward. And there are, so my first goal is to take care of the situation in which we are going to decide which sports competitively we can move forward with. Once that has been determined and set up, there is a second piece that we've already had multiple conversations about in which there, there could be, and I want to, I want to, you know, it, this could happen, where the... I want to, you know, it, this could happen, where the, some of the traditional fall sports that are not competitive, um, could have the opportunity to have some type of organized team activity. There's also, could be a situation in which, again, that organized team activity could be a strength and conditioning program, very similar to the one that we were successful in running over the summertime. So again, my full attention has been on the sports that have been cleared to, to, uh, to compete, and once that has been determined and solved, then my attention will go to step two of what we are going to be able to realistically offer, the other sports that could have that opportunity.
Mr. Galishaw, can I, can I follow up here? I think what Ms. Ammaral is getting at, say we don't have enough kids to field a freshman soccer team, would those students then have the option to, say, choose cross-country?
I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah, so, so what you're asking, and I'll, and I'll, I'll just be very upfront with the, with the, so if I was a, uh, an individual who tried out for soccer and soccer did not work out for me, could I move now, move to, you know, compete or be part of a different program? Now again, in your traditional season, in your traditional year, there are things that are in place that we follow as far as our rules and procedures. But for these matters and for these cases, the focus is on the students, the focus is on getting them involved and getting them to safely be able to be part of something for all of the aforementioned reasons I mentioned. So for those cases and for those matters, it's going to be a lot more flexible than we traditionally would be. Um, because I think, again, the time that we're in right now, it warrants it.
Thank you.
But again, just, just to let you know, like, like I said, I, I, and again, I think there will be certain lines that are drawn where, I'll give you an example, so, um, so if, field hockey, for example, if, um, you know, they, they, they start their season, they have their, their tryouts and workouts, they move forward, they get into game play, or right on the cusp of game play, that movement, it would be too late, but you're still talking about two and a half weeks. And again, I, I don't want to say too late, but I, but it would be a lot more challenging, um, to justify that part of it. Um, but again, I, I mean, we, we are, we are, we would be rolling this out, um, safely for our students with the, um, the hope that they will choose to participate for all the reasons why we stated why it was important. So again, we will, we will be flexible, uh, and again, with many of the situations.
Thank you.
So I, many of my questions were answered as we went through. I had the same question as Ms. Ammaral. Um, my, one of my questions is, um, the no attendance policy is our policy, so that may mean that New Bedford or Brockton may have a different attendance policy. Is that correct, or has there been any discussion of a uniform attendance policy?
So as, as I mentioned, uh, towards the beginning of the presentation, or I should say the middle, um, we have a meeting set up for tomorrow with, within our conference, and we're looking to get some consistent conference norms. Now, I, I can't guarantee that those norms would be attendance policies, because again, each district has the autonomy to create their attendance policies, create their, um, academic policies as far as eligibility standards. So again, it, it, it would vary. Um, so I would not be totally confident walking into that meeting and conversation, knowing that I could leave, and we are all of the belief that this is exactly how we're going to handle this attendance-wise, because again, every situation, every school department has their own challenges. Um, but there is, there needs to be some commonality amongst a lot of what we do, since we're going to be servicing their kids and they're going to be servicing ours. So, again, um, I, I wouldn't be confident that I could walk out saying that we're all under the same umbrella as far as what our expectations attendance-wise are. Um, but, you know, we would, we would handle those situations in what is in the best interest of, of Dartmouth High School, um, and, you know, the protocols and procedures that we would, uh, we would have in place that we will be following.
So I don't have any question, more questions for Mr. Christofouli. I have a sort of a statement, but he doesn't have to worry about answering. I mean, I am personally inclined, you know, Mr. Christofouli asked a question, are we willing to compete with the new rules? Um, I was a high school and college soccer player. I don't really know how they're going to play soccer with these rules. I read them the other day, and they're like crazy, but I would rather give kids the opportunity to try, um, than to not try at all. And I think, you know, it's on us to make sure that our kids can play, um, and that everybody follows the rules, that we do not establish a mentality of playing through, right? If you are sick, you don't come. If you quarantine, you quarantine, because otherwise you will ruin the season for everyone. And so I think we have to be really clear in setting a message about how serious we are going to be about this, because you don't want to be the person that ruins the season for everyone else. Um, that having been said, yeah, I, I think we're all definitely in favor of it. If someone would like to make a motion or statement.
I will, I will in one second. I mean, again, and I think the onus has got to be on the parents, and specifically the student athletes, and any student, okay? If they get up in the morning and they're not feeling good, they can't come to school. They can't come because they can't, but they can't be bringing, possibly bringing anything here. I mean, that goes for anyone, type of, type of, that's my two cents. And with that, Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we approve the, uh, uh, school committee presentation for, uh, uh, school year 2021 for athletics as presented by Mr. Christofouli.
I second that.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Ammaral. Um, any further discussion?
Nope.
I will just add one thing.
Good job, Andrew.
Thank you. To Mr. Nunes's comment, I would say,
Thank you.
At the university level, we have learned that relying on behavior of children without fully-developed brains is not the easiest thing to do, so I really want to put the onus on parents, right? This is, and the community, this is on us. We have to model this for our kids, and we have to be sure that we are sending the right message to our kids, right? Because 15-year-olds, I have 16, 17-year-olds in the house, they don't always make the best decisions, so we've got to help them make those right decisions. Um, that having been said, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so that carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Christofouli. Um, we look forward to moving forward with our, um, sports season, and we thank you for your presentation.
Let us know what else we can do.
Thank, thank you, thank you, folks. And, and as I mentioned, it's, it's, it's been, um,
A work in progress.
It's been quite a process to get to this point, and it continues to evolve, and, but please know that, um, I'm greatly appreciative of your support for our students and student athletes and our programs, um, and we will do everything within our power, uh, to make sure that this runs as smooth as it possibly can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
So with that, we'll move on to, which is usually like one of my favorite times of the year,
Thanks, Jonathan.
The introduction of new hires, we get to meet all the new teachers,
We get to have snacks.
We get free food.
Snacks, no food.
Right? You know, Mrs. Olivera is usually here to introduce everyone, so COVID ruined something else, I guess, but we are going to learn about our new teachers, yes? At least a little bit, even if they can't be here, so I'm excited to, um, to hear more about them. Is Dr. Gifford, you going to take over?
Yes, thank you. So we are, we are going to, um, we actually had a presentation as part of the convocation yesterday. Um, Mrs. Olivera, uh, talked about our, our new hires, so we're going to just replay that tonight, so we're pretending she's here, but I do want to mention that, in addition to the folks here, uh, you already know that we have three new administrators, I'll just re-mention them, if you will, Director of Music, Ian Flint, because they're not up in here. Um, Mark Hayes at the middle school was, uh, was one of our teachers, and he is now one of the assistant principals, and of course, uh, Dr. Justine Dale, who you met via virtual, um, as the new elementary, um, the early childhood director. So they're not in here, but these are the folks that Mrs. Olivera has now started working with in Project Time, so if we're ready to go, Mr. Galishaw, let's do it.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome back to a exciting school year. One of my favorite things to do here at Project, at Dartmouth Public Schools is Project Time. Uh, we have a wonderful group of new folks together. Um, every year at Project Time, I think I say the same thing, but this year was truly meaningful. I've never felt so old, uh, working with all the new teachers, all the new young teachers, but we had a great two days together, um, what I call Dartmouthizing them, getting them ready to go out into the trenches. Um, the mentors then took it over from there, but I'm going to bring you to this quote, where we really talk about what, what we need to do, and I, I hope that all of our new teachers can know that they're making a difference in their lives, along with everyone else. Um, this year, we had a little bit of a, I just can't figure out how to move this along. So when you see someone walking around the building with a new button today, welcome them, socially distant, say hi. I don't know how folks are going to learn people's names when we're all wearing masks, but they'll get it. Uh, we need name tags with our masks, but welcome, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce our new folks this year, starting with Casey Alair. She's a third-grade teacher at Quinn Elementary School, and Mrs. Janine Tavaz is her mentor. Eric Bosworth is at Dartmouth High School, is our new computer science teacher, and Mr. Doug Smith is his mentor. Jacqueline Bryant is our grade-three teacher at Quinn Elementary School, and Janine Tavaz is going to be her mentor also. Ellie Cassan, Cassana is a grade-one teacher at Quinn Elementary School, and Michelle Giosa is her mentor. Kimberly Carrero is not new to us, but she's here in a new position. She will be a special education teacher at Quinn Elementary School, and Lindsay Vafides will be her mentor. Rebecca Condon, uh, graduate of Dartmouth Public Schools, is coming back as a kindergarten teacher at Potter Elementary School, with Mrs. Dana Dusette as her mentor. Craig Dutra is a grade-five teacher at Potter School, with Darren Florent as his mentor. Marissa Hill, a math teacher and computer science teacher at Dartmouth High School, with Mrs. Patricia Fletcher being her mentor. Caitlin Coker, also not new to Dartmouth Public Schools, but in a brand-new position, will be our grade-seven special education teacher, with Mrs. Lisa Cat Turgeon as her mentor. Mary Kline, a grade-six math and science teacher at Dartmouth High School, with Mrs. Anne Brown as her mentor. And we welcome Desiree Metta, a grade-five special education teacher at Quinn Elementary School, with Mrs. Sharon Salvador as her mentor. Stephanie Montero will be a grade-eight math teacher at Dartmouth Middle School, with Lisa Keen being her mentor. Julie Newman is our new math teacher at Dartmouth High School, with Mrs. Deb August as her mentor. Kylie Thatcher is our grade-four teacher at DeMello Elementary School, with Mrs. Jennifer Klune being her mentor. We welcome everyone. We're happy to have them on board. Say hello to them, and let's make it a great year.
That's it. Our new bees, they're all babies.
Well, I don't know if any of them are watching us, but,
I know.
Normally, we get to say welcome to them, and, you know, say how glad we are to have them on board. We are glad to have them on board, um, and, you know.
Somewhere down the line, when this all breaks, we'll get to have an evening that we can,
Yes, maybe we'll have a double meeting next year with more cookies.
You know, before the year is out, we'll have a chance to, to meet them all before this all.
Can you imagine, though, being, you know, not only new to a district, but perhaps new to teaching in general, to start like this?
Yeah.
I can't even.
It is.
Anyway.
It is.
Ay yi yi.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
All right, so our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's update on the start of schools.
Sure, thank you. So we have a few things, uh, we wanted to update you on. Obviously, we had opening day for our teachers, and this was day two, and, um, all of us visiting the schools, folks were busy, they had, they were involved in their professional development, which I think I sent you the smores with the various, uh, things that they were involved in, but, you know, we really wanted these, yes, these 10 days, um, not only with the health and safety protocols that they've mandated training that they'll be involved in, but also, of course, a lot of work with their colleagues to be able to get their rooms set, to really figure out what they're doing for when the kids come back, um, making sure the rooms are set up for them, and, um, various technology sessions, et cetera. So you can look at that in, in that smores that Mrs. Olivera created, and all the professional development that's going, but again, in general, all of us visiting the schools, people were positive, they were, I think a lot were very excited to be back. We have also been working a lot on the virtual, we're calling learning academies, for the various levels, so as I mentioned to you previously, we were working on creating our own virtual learning academy for our elementary's level, uh, that just made more sense for us, so we have, um, I think we welcomed three today, new teachers, because we posted three, was it, three came in today, I believe. Um, we are going to be using the Quinn Elementary School, the giant, um, music room. There are two office spaces off of it, so we can fit six teachers in that space. Uh, we'll be securing some furniture, as well as some kind of, uh, partition, if you will. And again, it's going to be completely virtual for those students that are choosing not to return at all, and, uh, we are posting for, we're calling it a virtual academy coordinator, if you will, a teacher stipend position that will be helping Mrs. Olivera. She'll oversee the whole thing, but to have the day-to-day help with those teachers, uh, again, a lot of new, young folks that are coming in to, to first-time teaching positions. So we'll be giving them that help, as well as, of course, a mentor, a regular grade-level mentor. So we're excited about it, um, we're all anxious about it, of course, but we think it's going to be a good program. Uh, they will have our curriculum, that was one of the bonuses, that we thought we would take it over ourselves. We're continuing, the high school is continuing to work with the Edgenuity, um, platform, and we are now, we actually switched from Edgenuity, because it just was not going to work for the middle school with too much independent work. Uh, we are looking, and we're pretty positive, I would say 99.9%, that we are going to be using the TECA platform for the middle school instead. We've had meetings with the middle school this week, with Mr. Galishaw, and, um, unless the whole world blew up, we are in with TECA. So, um, each school is reaching out to parents that expressed interest in virtual platforms, so that is now being handled by the school level. So if people have ca- questions about that, they need to contact the schools, their individual schools, and their questions can be answered. We also completed, um, the, uh, color-coded calendar. We have scrutinized that, because every little thing can be a mistake, and it's so much intricate detail, and we, uh, did post that up on the website today, but we found one little mistake, of course, so we're going to pull it down, which just, didn't mean anything, but we're hoping that helps parents, so we'll, um, see when their, their cohort of students will be attending school, again, not knowing if that switches in the long run or what, but we're hoping that will help parents, um, navigate through this un, this crazy time. So other than that, uh, as you know, I think some of you watched it, and we also have posted on our website the link to Dr. Bromage's session, and as, just for folks at home that may not know, he's Associate Professor of Immunology, and he's leading research programs at UMass Dartmouth, focusing on, um, immune responses to infectious pathogens, et cetera. We had him speak for a couple of hours last week, uh, virtually to the staff, and I have to say, we had tons of positive comments from people that watched it, that felt much more comfortable and confident coming back to the schools, as well as, we got some ideas, which I know Mr. Kylie's going to talk to you about in a minute, um, but we did post that link on the website, so folks can watch that, it's very important. Um, we think one of the major, major points that he stressed over and over again was that the risk factor can be significantly decreased by what we're doing right now, the mask-wearing and the social distancing. That's number-one topic for folks. But anyway, with that, for the school opening and the COVID update, I asked Mr. Kylie to be part of that, to really talk about, more about the, the, uh, building and the facility, uh, preparation, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. So, we've had a chance, in some of our school committee meetings, to talk about, um, to talk about some of this, but yesterday, I had the opportunity to share with staff some of the things that we've been working on to, uh, begin this, this new phase. So, um, it's an exciting transition, after five and a half months of planning and hoping that we were going to come back, and then not getting back, and now finally getting back. So, um, we've spent this time, as you know, uh, receiving guidance, preparing, getting revised guidance, adjusting our preparations, getting more guidance, adjusting again, it's been really, you know, a unique, complex time, uh, for us to deal with, but, um, I guess, before I get into the details, I, I think that, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Rick Ferreira and his maintenance staff, uh, as well as the Rick Ferreira and his maintenance staff, as well as the building administrators and their support staff and custodians, who really have stepped it up and made this possible. It's... I certainly wouldn't be here today in this position without incredible efforts on their parts, so. We began the process in March, of course, hoping that we were going to have a quick return, and cleaning the buildings, disinfecting the buildings. Obviously, we were very disappointed that that never happened, but we continued our efforts from then till now. HVAC maintenance has been an area of focus, cleaning, filter changes, adjusting system settings to increase fresh air exchange. That's been one of the things that we've been talking to Dr. Brumaj about. Window maintenance and installation. In some cases, we were... Mr. Ferreira came up with some great ideas for installing windows in spots that actually weren't opening, weren't functioning, open windows in the past. So we did that. Adjusting, working with our custodial staff to adjust their hours, so that they will have time during the day to focus on high-touch surface areas and cleaning those. Focusing on providing EPA-listened SARS-CoV-2-approved chemicals that can kill COVID-19 as disinfectants for us. Purchasing items to make to apply those, like electrostatic sprayers and simple cans of spray, and lots of different, you know, techniques in order to make sure that the buildings are disinfected. After, you know, some confusion with... Before the state came out with its official guidance on physical distancing, once we finally realized that their sort of wishy-washy language wasn't going to work for us, and we focused on six feet, we worked to configure classroom spaces and other spaces to alter them in ways so that we could provide physical distancing. We leased storage spaces for lots of furniture, and are still leasing. I just signed a new one this morning for another unit at the middle school, because we're filling these things up. It's amazing how much stuff you pack into a classroom when you're not worried about how much stuff you have in a classroom. So that's an ongoing thing that we'll be, you know, continuing over the next couple of weeks, as we prepare for students. We are purchasing... Mrs. Olivera has been working to purchase individual student supplies, so that we can limit the sharing of items. We have created, with the help of the administrators in the buildings, protocols, including traffic patterns, signage, so that we can help kids understand where they need to be and where they shouldn't be, and how to move about the buildings. We're continuing to, you know, continuing to apply all those signs to areas, floors, walls, frantically moving on those. That's where I was this morning. At eight o'clock, I was at DeMello, where they were laying down lines in the middle of floors, our maintenance crew, and getting ready to put signage up in that school. We created isolation spaces for symptomatic students. We focused on hygiene. We have hand sanitizer readily available. We have more than four tons of hand sanitizer available right now in the buildings, so that's not going to be a problem. We can keep our hands clean. We have a great volume of masks for folks to keep them safe if they choose not to bring their own mask. Most people, by the way, so far, our staff, the vast majority of staff have brought their own masks. So we've really only distributed a few masks for all the staff over the last couple of days. But they are available, and each office has masks available for folks. We have provided... We have purchased specialized PPE, like gloves, gowns, safety glasses, face shields, clear masks for staff that... for whom it's recommended. So staff that are working closely with kids, we have purchased those items. We have desk shields also available, so like Plexiglas desk shields. We have a couple of models already in-house. We're going to have some more, two more different ones that I've been working on ordering today. So we'll have lots of options for those folks who do have to work within the six-feet-recommended physical distance of kids. There is a variety of ways to protect themselves. And obviously, good hygiene, proper PPE are the main components of that. So those are some of the things that, you know, we have in place to help the staff, and I think that it's something that, as now staff are returning, we've had a lot of administrative discussions about how this would work. And now, we finally have a big, larger, more collaborative group in place, and we have some time here to get it all organized and understand, okay, who's going to need what to do, to provide, you know, a high level of service to kids. So we're working with them now to do that, so that's... It's an exciting, different sort of time.
I just want to add one more thing, and then, of course, we can take questions. But just as far as staffing as well, as you know, there are various leaves that folks can choose to take. At this point, we have 10 staff members, TAs, as well as teachers, that have put in for some sort of a leave, but those are all based on childcare, and some of them are just intermittent. So we've allowed that, where they might say, "My child, my wife is working, you know, whatever days I need to be out Tuesdays and Thursdays." So some of them are not the entire time or the entire week. So this week, we'll be... Now that we kind of had that organized, we'll be meeting and looking at that and deciding how to help the principals cover those people. We've also had, of course, some retirements since all of this happened with TAs, et cetera. So this week, we're working on that, to see exactly where we are with those folks and what we need to add to the staffing, or how we're going to cover those positions. I have to say, with, you know, Mr. Kylie, of course, he's been working really hard on the grants that we have been given, but if people think this is cheap, it's not. Just to try... We are basically trying to develop three education systems and shift our entire education system in a couple of months that's been 350 years in existence. And like the virtual platform, again, we had to hire this six additional teachers, which is going to be through our grants. They're one-year positions, but we have to be honest, we're having a very hard time with our special education department to try to cover, when students are choosing, for example, virtual. We only have so many teachers, and they only have so many hours in the day, and they're responsible for classrooms of kids. So we have to be honest, that's a big issue and significant problem, and we're going to be working on that really hard this... We have meetings this week to now focus on that issue. So again, if people think this is not... This is just like the schools are closed, because I've seen those comments before. We're not closed, and we're still teaching, and we have, I would say, double the work to try to meet the needs of our kids in various platforms. So that's what I... And I know we'll be meeting with town hall and working through them and letting folks know the work we're trying to do to meet the needs of all our kids. So that's all I have for tonight.
Why don't we go down, Ms. Wade? Go ahead.
Michelle, defer to...
No, go ahead, go. Nope.
I'm not sure. You know, first of all, again, like, thank you for everything that, you know, your staff have done. It's, you know, wow, it's been a journey. I'm trying to think if I have anything.
As Mr. Noon says, "Live in the dream."
Should've worn that shirt tonight.
Yeah. Do you want me to come back to you, Ms. Wade?
Well, I just have one quick question, I guess, about the virtual learning academy. Has there been any, you know, as we're hiring those six teachers? How will that work? You know, normally, if you're... They would have their, you know, special areas that they would go to. So... And I know there was some lack of certainty there. Has that been kind of determined a little bit further, or how that'll be adjusted?
Yeah, we put that right up front, because of the personnel issues and the scheduling, we are not promising that the kids get that. We are going to, for example, we were talking today that, I know Ms. Roy is working on the specialist schedule, and if folks have gaps in their schedules, we were just talking today, they might be able to at least record some lessons, like, let's say it's an art lesson or something. So... But yeah, we just don't have the personnel, to be honest.
Right, right. Okay, and that's what I assumed. And then, just, you know, kind of on a... You know, I had, you know, some parents ask, you know, and about, let's say, you know, they're anticipating, they're hoping to stay in the remote. Is there any way that, let's say, something changes within the family, that someone can jump back into the remote? We go into hybrid, they want to jump onto that remote. I know we're trying to get everyone that wants to do that ideally making that decision now. Is there still that possibility, let's say, like, October, you know, their health, someone in their family's health changes, can they make that jump at that point?
From like our remote system that we're...
Like, onto like our... So let's say, we are jumping onto hybrid. Can they jump into either edgenuity, you know, the middle school platform, or our elementary platform? Is that something they can do at that point? I know we want to get those folks, you know, started in the falls, you know, right now, but is that an option?
We... Again, we talked again today, but as far as like the element... We see them a little bit differently, because the elementary is, basically, we're saying they're our teachers now. They're our... It's our curriculum. So there would be actually no need either way. But what we want to be able to do is approach each situation on an individual basis, because, as you know, especially if we're in hybrid, and we've already, let's say, all our classrooms are full with the six-foot capacity, and we just can't shift them, you know? But we will be able to approach each one on an individual basis. I hope there aren't many, but...
Yeah, right.
Yeah. But we are... Especially with the edgenuity platform. I know the high school was hoping to get kids started right away, because it's just that continuum of curriculum to make it, and they could change at, as we said, at semester break, so that the grading period is over and shift in. So there are nuances to the situations.
Yeah, but I think that's, you know, I'm sure I'll have other questions later, but I think that's, you know, you've done so much work, and again, I'm very grateful.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Noon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things, a couple of general comments, first and foremost, and I agree with my colleague, my hat's off to everybody for Yeoman's work that's been done this summer. Appreciate all the, you know, email updates and everything else as to what's been going on and such. I did manage to catch part of the Q and A that you had on Thursday, and that was excellent. I thought it was, you know, well-done type of deal. And I did catch most of Dr. Brimman's discussion on Friday. Fantastic. I mean, he laid it all out there, and he had the answers to any and all questions and situations. So I mean, personally, I appreciate his time with, you know, with the district, giving us, you know, that information. The only question I have, and, you know, thinking about this type of deal, more so for Mr. Kylie, I would think, somewhere down the line, all of a sudden, everything clears. And Governor Baker, January 4th, says, "Okay, we're good. You guys can go back to full participation in school. You know, no six-foot, no guidelines. Have a nice day." Yeah, probably not, but that's wishful thinking. But in all seriousness, how long's it going to... How long would it take us to basically get our classrooms back set? I mean, I know we've got all the storage containers on-site and that type of deal, but to reconfigure everything, I guess, is...
Yeah, we would be so excited that I'm sure we'd work all night. I think it would take us several days, and I think we'd likely have to have some sort of break in order to do it. But not to say that it couldn't incorporate a weekend, but a weekend alone, I don't think would be enough to actually reconfigure everything. So we would probably require, you know, possibly two days of, okay, let's reset, and then, plus the weekend time, in order to be able to get everything back and set up, yeah.
Almost per se, for argumentative sake, take two snow days plus the weekend.
I think that is a possibility, yeah.
To get everything, okay. I was just, you know, I do my best.
It's a lot to do.
There's no doubt about it. I mean, I've seen what the classrooms look like and what they were before.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Emerald.
Yes.
I'll start off with the calendar. That was great. You mentioned the error in there and all of that, but I didn't look, and I'm just wondering. I've seen people post, and I can understand the confusion. They... There have been comments I've seen, although I've taken myself off of most social media platforms, and it's been a breath of fresh air. However, I have seen some folks' kind of snarky comments, but understandable confusion around, yeah, that's really... How can you figure that out? And, well, you can, if you take it step by step, but I get it. It's overwhelming for many, including myself. You can see my notes, it's a hot mess. But I'm wondering if the calendar will be translated into our district's electronic calendar, so that then a parent who would have chosen, say, notifications for DeMello, or Quinn, or Potter, or the high school, that they then could then choose, for the time being, Cohort A, Dartmouth High School, Cohort B, Potter, so that they could kind of extract that more easily for their families? Would that be something that we could look into doing?
On the district calendar...
Like on the district calendar?
October 3rd, it's Cohort A Day.
Right.
That's what you mean.
Could that... Yeah.
I mean, it'd be a lot of work, but...
I'm just thinking, that might be something that...
I don't do that, so I don't know.
And to me, I don't do that, so yeah, sure, why not?
Yes, of course, someone would handle that.
You'd have to work with Mr. Galishaw, see if there was a fast, you know, quick...
Yeah, there might be, yeah. If there is, I think it might be helpful for a family to kind of translate that information easily, and if we could... Anything we could do to ease that. But again, only, you know, if it's possible.
I would definitely print that and put it on my refrigerator.
Yeah. Oh, and the refrigerator, and the car, make it a magnet everywhere I go, absolutely. I printed it in black and white, so it's not doing me any good right now, but...
I'll talk about that, too. Oh, because I don't have color.
Right, right. What was that? Oh, he's got it. He has it in color, so that's... So, okay, so that's just a suggestion, if we can. Let me see. And of course, I'm, you know me, I'm like the PPE police over here. And I just want to bring it back to, we talked about Ms. Andrew Christopher, you know, we brought it, like, hit the ground running. Do we have our PPE where it needs to be for the people to access it right now, even teachers, even though they haven't necessarily needed it, students aren't in, and they're bringing their own mask? But are those things, like, right, hit the ground running, available?
In classrooms right now? No.
Yeah, okay.
No.
But they will be...
Before there's kids here, absolutely. But what we do have is, so, PPE for staff, for doing what they're doing right now, is available for them. So masks, I mean, they're not working closely with students right now, so they don't, you know, need any of that additional equipment. But we do have it all, and we will distribute it all. We are still configuring some things. Believe it or not, we're still moving furniture, so we really don't want to do that until we're set. But we do have, you know, some time before students arrive, so...
Yeah. And in my... This just came to me, and you may have gone over this, but is the PPE going to exist in the classrooms, or just say, like, in the nurses? I would hope not, but I mean, are they going... Is it going to be everywhere?
I think it depends on what the PPE is being used for. But yes, I would expect that a supply would be nearby whoever needs to use it. So if particular staff members in a classroom sometimes need gowns, or gloves, or shields, then it should be in the classroom. It doesn't... They shouldn't have to go and get it somewhere if they're regularly using it, so...
Okay. One other... One concern of mine that I've run into, so a family member of mine requires some personal equipment, personal care equipment that gets delivered monthly, and part of that equipment is gloves, and the gloves haven't been coming with the other personal care products. So you know me, I keep, like, we have enough PPE... So, you know me, I keep, like, we have enough PPE and I trust you. I, you've done a phenomenal job. I just, I just know the reality of what happens to that PPE and I just worry. I, I, if we have three months, six months, I just ask that we keep ordering it and get to eight months so that we know maybe in four months, we need more. I'm, I'm highly worried about that, just because I, I'm thinking, of course, of, of familiar situations and, and those kids who just might not be able to kind of reset themselves and get a little frustrated. And I'm thinking of bodily fluids and just frustration, maybe spitting and some younger kids touching and sticky and everything else. I could list a million things that you might not already have in your, you probably already have a list, but, but if at all possible, if we keep ordering, it's just a concern of mine because it's so necessary. And anyway, that's my little PPE statement.
I agree. Yeah, it's a concern of mine, too. I mean, it, it honestly is what I wake up in the middle of the night thinking about.
I'm sure.
So, at 4:00 AM, when I, my, the first thought in my head is something about some PPE thing.
Yeah.
That has been happening a lot, I hate to say.
And I thank you, sir.
So, but yes, no, I, I totally agree. And we have, we have quantities in stock that I know we are fine for a couple of months.
Okay.
And then, we, we also need to learn to, to understand how much we need.
Absolutely.
You know, and this is a whole new, a whole new adventure, so.
And that's another worry, I, you know, the over-usage potentially, not just of the students, just of the overly, over-caution of staff that, over time, will get more familiar with their abilities, sort of understand when they need to do that versus hyper-vigilant, I guess, yeah.
I agree.
That's a whole other element.
I agree.
I, let's see, I'm sorry. Yeah, of course, you know, the, the special education piece, I don't know where I wrote it, but I'll just go off the cuff, you know. In normal times, it is not uncommon for, for districts, not just our district, to secure staff for those related services, speech therapists, occupational therapists. I mean, that's rampantly understaffed in districts and oftentimes, districts have to contract out to have those services. So, it's, it's understandable, but deeply concerning, just knowing that many students haven't been able to access since March, anything on a regular basis. And while I'm, I'm very optimistic for my own personal situation, I can understand parents being quite concerned about the regression.
Right.
And I know there'll be more to come on that and I try to not alarm parents and let them know those things, there, there's guidance for that, too. But however we can, I don't know if every, every Herculean effort we can make to, to make sure that those positions are somehow filled. And to that note, I don't know if this is possible, and I'm just thinking of this, so it might not even make sense, but I wonder if in, by chance, some of our partner collaboratives, potentially, if there could be some, not changes to the IEP, but in this, this time, this pandemic time, I wonder if it's possible that we sort of reach out to those folks or create some kind of agreement and, and some of those services might be able to be facilitated.
Right.
You know, not the placements change for these students, but I don't know if that's even possible, I, but.
Right. All I can say right now is it's high on our priority list as well. We share your concern and are not shying away from trying to solve the problem. It's just, right now, we haven't solved it.
No.
So.
And it's not just us.
Right.
This is, we, we are in, in very good company with this horrible problem. So, I, I really thank everyone, Mr. Kylie, I, everyone, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And that's all I have to say.
Thanks. So, I will maybe take the middle path between Ms. Amaral and Mr. Noon's. I'm not super optimistic, but I will also say that I am concerned that we don't want to over-order PPE, because the last thing we want to have is four tons of hand sanitizer that go bad, because I have hand sanitizer that goes bad. So, I mean, given that money is tight, I do think it is definitely a balance and that we need to learn. And we don't want to necessarily order eight months because if we only need five months, then we've got a lot of stuff that we pay for. So, I just want to get some clarity. I know parents have been asking about this. Can we, I know we're still sort of working on what the remote options are, but can we sort of clearly publish those options for parents, direct them? Because people are asking, "When do I have to make my decision by?" And I know they, you know, they did the survey and you're saying, so I want to be clear, they, they should finalize their decision with the principal of their building.
That's right.
Do we have a date by which they need to do that? Because parents have been asking this, like, when do, because we haven't also finalized what remote learning looks like. So, I'm just, I think there's a lot of confusion about, "When do I have to make the decision?" And I want to know what I'm making a decision about. So, I, I don't, I know you can't give me an answer right now, but if we could publish that, that say, "This is what it looks like, this is who you contact and this is the date you need to contact people by," I think that would help a lot of parents in terms of clarity.
Yeah, we can do that. And like I said, it, it really evolved a little bit more, but this week, we came to a, I think, a real clear place, so.
That's great. And I just think it just needs to be communicated, a deadline set and a procedure for that just needs to be set so parents know. To Ms. Amaral's points about the AB, from the high school and middle school perspective, I think this is also going to get really tricky, because not only do you have the AB cohort, you have, like, day A, B, C, D, E, F, which I can never keep track of either. So, I don't know, do we have to merge it with a calendar? But even if we could be something so, like, sort of lowish-tech as to create, like, a Twitter handle or a Facebook post to, like, "The Middle School School Day," right? And it's like Cohort A, Day E, right? Because I think a lot of us have confusion about what day it is in those schools, not just Cohort A and D, but now that we're adding Cohort A and D with the days where the periods roll, I think it would just be really helpful if there is a place that everyone can go. And it doesn't, we could low-tech it, right? We don't have to integrate it with our calendar. It could be a Facebook or a Twitter or something like that, where people just know, "Okay, I get up, I check that, that's how I find out which class I show up to this morning at, you know, in the morning."
Yep.
The other thing that I had was, do we have plans for getting materials to kids? Some of the classes, like, you know, maybe you need math manipulables for lower levels. I know my son is taking robotics with Mr. Bradzky and I'm pretty sure he's probably going to need something to do that, right? So, what is our plan? Do we have a plan for those classes where kids need stuff that they're going to have to work on at home, either for remote or the hybrid, to get that stuff to them?
That's what I asked last meeting.
Yeah. I know that each school is working on, like, I know a letter's going out from the elementary this Friday, those kinds of things. So, again, a lot of that is coming from the schools. I know they did some Coho, Cohort, I've got Cohort in the brain, Chromebook dissemination today, if you're scared, you know, those kinds of things. So, it's little by little, but there's also going to be book bags at the elementary. But just to get back to what you asked, so a lot is coming from the schools, but just to get back to what you asked about the signing up for the virtual, one thing that did go out was an email to parents that did initially say they were interested, so they have that information. So, we will, we'll continue to post more updates, just what you're saying, but you should have received. If you still are, if you didn't say you were interested, contact the school, et cetera, et cetera. So, those are good points.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yep.
And I think, I think the other thing related to not just, you know, textbooks and then the specialized materials is, parents really want to know, like, what do they need to buy? We are running into, we start classes on campus on, on Wednesday, we're running into supply chain issues. So, like, a lot of our books and lab materials, students are like, "Uh, I can't get my book for three weeks because just the supply chain is so disrupted."
Yeah.
So, the sooner we can let parents know what they need to get, the better, because I am worried about, hopefully, there won't be too much specialized stuff and I know I have, like, folders and this and that all over the house here and there that I could reuse. But getting that to parents and letting them know, I think, would be really useful.
Yeah, I know that's coming out from the teachers as well.
Okay.
I guess we're just a little slow this year.
No, we are, but I, I just know, I think, I think everyone is anxious, right?
Yeah, they are.
It's really a couple of weeks before school is starting and-
Of course, they're anxious.
People kind of want to know what they're, what they're going to need to get.
Yeah.
So.
Very good.
Other questions, Mary?
Yeah, actually, if I could jump back in, you know, I don't know if this dovetails exactly with this conversation, but as we were kind of talking about, like, you know, parents and readiness for, you know, with their children in the mornings, I know I had reached out to, to Mr. Kylie and I had brought this up before and came up with, you know, several parents that I know, the possibility of parents doing a checklist, just even something that could be on their phone, akin to what you do when you go to a pediatrician's office in the morning and just, just every morning, seeing, like, as a, you know, step to say, like, "Does your child have any of these? You know, you've already registered that child, you know, check off, like, which one of these?" And this might be more for Mr. Galishaw, but, you know, something that could then go on to, like, they have an Aspen, you know, there's a red flag, you know, or something comes up, it should be, you know, it happens at every medical appointment that I've gone to, you know, where I get, like, you just, you have it there, so it shows up, the nurse can, you know, access it, you know, if she has a concern, she can see. You know, it doesn't have to be sent to the bus driver, it's not, you know, not a ticket, but just something that the parent actually is going through a checklist in the morning, you know, on their phone, bing, 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 nope, 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 send Johnny off to school, you know, or, oh, wait, you know, Johnny did have a fever last night and that would be a red flag. So, and again, it can be wiped at the end of every week or, you know, something like that. But I think it would just be helpful for parents just to have that. And again, we kind of talk about parents and the accountability when it comes to sports as well. I just think like that, just to have that process, one more thing at home as a reminder, if that's something that we can accomplish, you know, I think it would be helpful.
So, we have that on campus and the problem is, once you fill it out five times, you're like, "Yep, yep." You stop reading it after about, you know, day five, because the questions never change. So, I don't, I don't disagree, like, having a checklist for people to refer to, but requiring them to fill it out every day, I, I don't, I don't know, I haven't seen the research on that, whether it actually changes behavior or whether people just start, you know what I mean? Who reads a user agreement anymore, right? You just scroll on down and click the check. And that, we found that happening sort of in our campuses and on campuses, that people aren't reading those. Mr. Noon's?
Yeah, and I'm just wondering, with what you're saying, are you talking about that checklist then gets sent to the school? Or that's, that just stays with the parent?
It could be sent to the school as it looks on your Aspen.
Because I mean, my only concern now becomes is now we start overloading the schools with, you know, you get a thousand here, a thousand in the middle school, 300 and 400 in each stuff.
I was thinking, almost go into, like, their Aspen account, you know, something like that, that would kind of go, just, you know, float in and then-
This, you know, it's-
It would only come up if there was, like, a red line, you know, something that, you know, that was a, a red flag, so.
I'm just wondering if we're just, again, putting too much overload and emphasis, we're taking responsibility off the parent and student and pushing it on to administration and staff, you know, okay? That might do sense. No disrespect.
No, it's okay.
I mean, I, I do think it, it might be good for parents. I think we have a list of, if you have those things, don't send your kid to school, but I don't know that we need to make it, that you have to fill it out every day. Because then also imagine you've got five kids and you've got to fill out one of those. Like, I would probably be ready to, like, every morning, having to fill out 10 questions for five kids can be a lot, too, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm just not sure if it's, I'm just not sure if it's an extra burden that doesn't provide us with additional, enough additional information. I don't know. I mean, maybe you can look into it.
Yeah, I'm curious if parents would go crazy.
Right. Well, it's a lot for parents to do and it's a lot for, right, for people to manage in terms of data. And I'm not sure, but there's probably research on whether or not it changes people's behavior that we could maybe look at. Other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you for all of your hard work.
Oh, we have, you're welcome.
It's been a lot of work, I know. There's still a lot.
Oh, there's still a lot.
We're doing the same thing. We're starting classes tomorrow and there's, like, 50,000 questions that we still haven't answered. You know, you're building the plane as you fly, so.
That's right.
We have a little extra time with starting remote and so I think that would be good.
Thank goodness.
I don't have any, I don't think you have any other updates.
No.